Good evening. Welcome to our January 16th, 2024 City Council meeting. It is 7:03 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mason Okubo from Emmanuel First Lutheran, and Councilman Kantoz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for all civil servants serving West Covina. Bless their hard work and sacrifice. Give discerning hearts to our city council as they govern our city. Give them wisdom so that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order and stability and prosperity to our community. Give each of us a spirit of unity that we may work together for the good of your city and to glorify you. Give us humility and love. Remove all barriers, walls, and strongholds and divisions that keep us separated from you and from one another. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Please face the flag and where applicable, remove hats and follow my lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Kantoz.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Present.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado is absent.
City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, so we will now move on to presentations. So if I could invite Chief Richard Bell and Officer Sam Ling down. All right. Bittersweet day for us. Officer Sam Ling began his career with the Alhambra Police Department, where he served for 10 years. He then joined the WCPD family in September 2005 and retired on December 30th, 2023, with a total of 28 years of service between both agencies. Officer Ling has contributed greatly to the department and the community throughout his years of service. And before we present and I say a few things, I'd like to give the mic to Chief Richard Bell.
All right. Well, good evening, residents and city staff and council. I'm back. I wanted to come tonight because Sam is one of the few individuals in our department that I actually worked patrol with when we got here. So it was, it's a special moment for me, and I wanted to come and see Sam off. But Sam was involved in many things in the department, and I just want to highlight just a couple of things that he was involved in. He was a field training officer. He was a school resource officer, a background investigator. He was a training officer, which is the same thing as an FTO. Some of the collateral duties he had, he worked in the DB. He was a baton instructor. He was part of our chief's advisory group. He took care of our command post. He was a member of the peer support team. And of course, what most of you were probably known for, he helped ignite, get started our Hope Team. He's one of the original members of it. He's the one who briefed us all up. He got all the information. Just so you know, when you work at Hope, that's not like the glory job that everybody wants to do. Sam took it upon himself to say, you know what? I'll do it. And he's been doing it ever since, and he's done a really good job at it. So thank you for that, Sam. He received the Community Service Award in 2021, I mean, I'm sorry, in 2012. And in 2022, and I believe in maybe '23 as well, he received a life-saving award, not just one, but two. So Sam has greatly helped our community. I think he's been a very positive influence here. And Sam, I just want to say thank you for the many years of service.
And I'd just like to say, Officer Ling, when I first got elected to the council, I remember we had a meeting. We talked about the unhoused. We talked about the Hope Team. And just the care that you have approached every single human being here in West Covina, not only as a professional, but just as a human being. And that's hard work, and that's work I know you take home. And I am sure there are plenty of tales and stories of human suffering that you've witnessed, but you've also supported so many folks, gotten them the treatment and care that they needed, and didn't give up on people. And the fact that you led our Hope Team in the way you did it, it is a legacy. And I hope that every officer that takes on that role will do it in the way you did. And so from the city of West Covina, like I said, it is bittersweet for us, but I am sure for your family, it's a wonderful day. And so thank you, Officer Ling. I'd like to present you with Ling Place. Officer Ling, if you have a few words?
Thank you. No, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the community and to work on such a wonderful department. West Covina, the city, the residents, the department has been wonderful. I'm just glad that I was able to give back a little bit. And I know I wasn't able to help a lot of people, but thankfully, I was able to help some. And hopefully, we'll continue that tradition and make the city even better than it is now.
Yeah. With the family. Council, if it's okay, I'd like to move the City Manager Report up. Great. Now for our City Manager's Report, which will be given by our Acting City Manager, Paulina Morales.
Sorry, let me pull it up on my computer. If you can give me a second. Okay, well, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Like to get started with saying Happy New Year to everyone. I know it's the first council meeting of 2024. So just the City Manager's Report, just wanted to highlight some of the events that we had from the holiday season. So we had our Winter Wonderland Party at Palm View Center on December 15th. It was a party for the adaptive community, and it was a huge success. It was put on by our staff, and over 80 participants attended the event. They transformed the center into a winter wonderland with snowflake decorations, twinkling lights, and a beautiful backdrop. There was a dance party, and there was a lot of laughter, smiles, and positive energies. And we were very happy that it was our first Winter Wonderland Party, and we look forward to having it in the upcoming year. The next event was our youth basketball banquet at Cameron Community Center. That was held on December 16th, and it was the last banquet, basketball banquet of the year. The entertainment included performances by the West Covina Cheer. There were games and raffles, and every coach called their team up and players to receive a participation award and medal. And that was at Cameron Center. The next event was Children's Holiday Breakfast at the West Covina Senior Center. This was the first annual event we held this, and it was at the Cortez Community and Senior Center Park. It was hosted by our staff, and we partnered with the West Covina School District, the Vine Daycare Center, and Shadow Oak Tiny Tots Program to provide this breakfast to community members. It was held on a Saturday. Over 130 children and parents participated and enjoyed a breakfast prepared by the senior staff chefs, and included hot cocoa bar. They interacted with Santa, got balloon figures, and had a nice event or breakfast with our community. And the last couple more events we had were at the Cortez Park. We had the Christmas Cortez Park, a celebration for our senior community, and it was held on Monday, December 18th. Senior had the option to attend up to four events. Disco All the Way, D Y I Christmas Tree Mystery Event, and Deck the Halls with DJ Rudy. Over 300 seniors enjoyed the series that featured drinks by the Cove Cocktail Bar, Christmas Tree Craft, led by senior center staff. We had a 360 photo booth, karaoke, sock donation by San Gabriel Valley, senior softball team photos of Santa, music entertainment, and DJ Phil and DJ Rudy were hosting the events. We had the Shadow Oak Community Center held Let's Get Crafty Christmas Ornament Workshop on Thursday, December 21st. This was a free event and open to children and adults of all ages. Participants had the opportunity to decorate their very own ornament and mini Christmas tree. We had a total of 34 participants join us. Also at the Palm View, we had Fosse the Snowman Cookie Decorating Party. It was on Friday, December 22nd. 40 participants enjoyed a cookie decorating kit provided by our local vendor, Sweet Franklets. To kick off the festivities, we provided a brief introduction and explained the activity. They also had stations for, sorry, refreshments and snacks, ensuring everyone had plenty of treats to eat. So these included friendly competitions as cookie decorating contests, board games, and music to dance. The winter cookie decorating party for special needs was a heartwarming and inclusive experience. The seniors also started or kicked off the New Year celebrating at the Cortez and Community Senior Center New Year's brunch on Wednesday, January 3rd. They danced to DJ Rudy and enjoyed a special New Year's lunch prepared by our senior center staff chefs. Yesterday, as we all celebrated Martin Luther King Day, the city of West Covina continued its partnership with the San Gabriel and AAACP San Gabriel Valley Chapter, holding its 25th Annual Event. So we've partnered with them for 25 years. So it's very exciting to be able to continue that partnership with them. And the event yesterday, we had all of our council members, and the mayor had a keynote speech. A very good event. And so we continue to invite the community to attend it every year and join us to celebrate MLK. Right now, as we're starting the year, we are getting ready to, we're preparing, you know, for next year's fiscal budget. So we are asking the community for your input for the fiscal year 2425 budget. The survey is up on our website and available for residents to help provide us feedback as to what priorities they view for the community. And so this is done every year, and so it's up and available for residents now on our website. Something that we also wanted to kind of go over is the process on how to report abandoned vehicles or RVs on public streets. Just a couple of things. Streets are public parking unless there's posted restrictions that otherwise officers can enforce. We are following state laws in regards to towing, and so that it does require a 72-hour noticing period. In West Covina, currently, RVs follow the same laws as passenger vehicles. And so, and I'll go through the process in the next slide, but disconnected trailers are, can be subject to immediate removal. So those are separate than RVs. We are, this, oh, not yet, sorry. We are currently working on an RV ordinance that will be brought before the city council at a future council meeting. But if you see an abandoned vehicle, and so what is that? It can be a vehicle without a license plate. It's been apparent neglect. If there's cobwebs or debris, it hasn't been moved in a long time. If it's inoperable, if it's missing tires or an engine, obviously, it's also inoperable. Or if it's expired, registration can also be a cause for an abandoned vehicle. So if you do see an abandoned vehicle on your street, you can report it through the West Covina Report and Issue app. You can phone it in or send an email, but we do try to encourage everyone to use the app. And so the process is, if you do see an abandoned vehicle on the street, you submit the request. An officer would do an investigation and determine if it's abandoned and inoperable. Then they would follow the following steps. They would issue a warning notice to the vehicle. They would mark the vehicle by chalking the tires to see if it does move or not. And if the vehicle remains in the same location after being marked, it will be towed after 72 hours, and that is state law that we're following. If it's determined that it's stolen or, like I said, clearly abandoned, it's stripped and you can't operate it, and say it's missing tires, then it is able to be for immediate removal. And so that is the process that we go through for abandoned vehicles in the community. And I think the upcoming events is, we had a series of open houses for our facilities last fall, winter. And the last open house we have is the Cortez Park Community and Senior Center Open House that is scheduled for Friday, 26th, from 12 to 2 at the Cortez Community Center. And we encourage everyone to attend. This is a way for us to open the facilities to our community members, let them get to know our staff, get them to, you know, explore the different programming that we have at the facility. So everyone's encouraged and welcome to attend this open house. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when your name is called to speak. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
I have six speaker cards, Mayor. John Schumaker, followed by Matthew Smith, followed by R. Robinson.
I put in a request for the report about the possible misconduct of our Mayor Pro Tim. The response I got back, one of the laws that was cited was Government Code Section 7922. It says, "An agency shall justify withholding any record by demonstrating the record in question is exempt under express provisions of this division, or that the facts of the particular case, the public interest served by not disclosing that record outweighs the public interest served by disclosure of the record." Now, I have to wonder how the public, not knowing if our Mayor Pro Tim has been threatening, harassing, just, you know, attacking, all the different things that people could have accused him of, how us not knowing that is somehow to withhold that is better than us knowing? Better than us knowing? How can that be? We need to know if we've got somebody who is a threat to employees and the public sitting in office. It seems like he'd want that report released. So we know for sure if we have somebody who is an absolute, I don't know what would be the right word to say, but is obviously not standing up to what his trust should be as a member. As I go through the other laws that were cited, one of them was, there might be other investigations going on. Well, by that, by any chance, is that a criminal investigation for his conduct? I think that should be important for us to know, and he'd want us to know. He'd want the public to know if we have somebody who's, you know, basically a hothead who is harassing our employees. They deserve to be able to come to a workplace that is not hostile. So I don't see how this council agrees with that and not bringing it onto the record. Matter of fact, let's go one step farther. Our current mayor, the same people, namely Tony Wu and others, wanted to remove you from the rotation because what they did, what they did, insulting our Native American residents and neighbors, what they did. I'm surprised they let you be mayor because of the misconduct that he's had. It had to be your fault. That's how stupid this is. But as you, as I go through and look at these things, there could be possible criminal activity, there could be possible legal repercussions. That's the reason to withhold it? I don't understand why there's any reason to withhold it. We already have had a past case where it was released. The city council brought it forward. So the city councils, one of you should ask for that to be brought forward and released to the public. It can be redacted to the extent that we won't know who the different people are, we'll just know what his conduct was. The people have a right to understand that. If you can, if, if three members of this council at one time thought it was bad for you, you were so bad that you needed to be removed, Mr. Mayor, from the rotation because they did something stupid, you just wanted to have people participate in our centennial, people who had been here for hundreds of years, not just 100 or a couple hundred, but for hundreds of years, that was absolutely horrible. But a man who could conceivably be creating a hostile work environment that multiple people have made complaints about, if that's true, shouldn't we know? Shouldn't the public be made aware of that? How can you withhold that information? Why is he allowing it to be withheld? Because it's not the public interest that's being served, it's his interest if any of that is true. We already know we lost $5 million, when you take into account legal fees, of a case that revolved around him not wanting to follow the rules. So how much more are we going to lose because of his inability and his ego on attacking people? We need to know, we have a right to know. So please release it. Thank you.
Matthew Smith, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Ray Vargas.
Good evening, Council. We are about two months away from warmer weather, which is why I'm here tonight to reintroduce or put back on the table outdoor dining. So I'm going to suggest, or I'm going to say where we are at and how we got here. On March 1st of last year, I met with the city regarding outdoor dining. September 5th, Brian Yu put during Mother May I at a council meeting, an explanation of how a small, of how a restaurant or a business would go out to request outdoor dining, the process of it all. Tony seconded that on September 5th. On October 9th, myself and Doug, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, went through the city walkthrough regarding outdoor dining. We asked for an update in November, and we were told that surveyors were being looked to be hired. We questioned that because the area that we're using is already city land, and we're not sure why surveyors would be needed for something that we already know is city land. So circling back to September 5th, where Brian Yu asked for a presentation, I've got about three minutes and 30 seconds to do a presentation tonight on what you asked for. Skip the first page, please. Turn to the second page. It requires an application, a filing fee of $140 to the city, $96.36 for review of staff time, and that will be however much time it takes to review. A $440 fee required, it's middle of application. Number three, a site plan, which includes a title, et cetera. A north arrow and scale-oriented drawings to the north, and use a scale not more than 1 to 30 unless approval's been granted. Two parcel specifications, fully dimensioned subject parcel boundaries, abutting street information, name, location, and withdrawal of closes to intersection, existing contours of watercourses, location dimensions of all existing proposed easements. We're talking about four parking spots. We're talking about four parking spots still. But there's more. There's a map legend that needs net acreage, parcel, gross floor area, buildings, proposed off-street parking, required off-street parking, and number of permanent seats. There's floor plans that are needed that include exact location and dimensions of storage, kitchen, rooms, et cetera. There's a business organizational plan that's required, provide a complete and detailed account of all activities proposed. The more detailed the plans, the better. That's what, page three? Can you turn to page four? That is your administrative review application. That's your stuff. Owner permission needs to be notarized. That's to give you permission to come on the property. Deposit agreement is saying that I'm going to pay the $96.36 per hour after the $440 fee to begin with. I'm sorry, the next page is the actual permission to go onsite. If you look at the last page of that document for department use, it's case file, file number, filing fee, receipt, application. And then there's an application submitted checklist that'll be done by your side, which will include two sets of plans, digital copy of submitted plans on a flash drive, notarized owner permission, occupant's permission to enter and investigate site, deposit agreement, and complete business organizational operations plan. So that's what I sent back in March to you that I thought was excessive. We are about a year away. Springtime's coming up. We don't have a lot of confidence in the walkthrough and the surveyors of the public plan, so we're circling back around to this document in regards to Hope. We are hoping that, you know, in the next two, three months, we're able to go back to outdoor dining, not just us, but the other six restaurants are there also on Glanora Avenue and literally for the rest of the city. I am down to 43 seconds. There's another permit needed also for engineering and for, by the engineering, is an engineering permit application. Feel free to peruse that. To close, I know how I would handle it if I was in your seats, but Doug and I are looking just for an honest reply. If you are not going to permit business to have outdoor dining, just say, we're not interested in providing that, we're not interested in supporting that, we're good. Because we have money earmarked for this project, we've been holding on to it, we will do other development if the city has no interest in it, but we're approaching a year, and just, we're good. We'll still help with the festivals, the senior center donations, all that stuff. But we're looking for an answer. All right, thank you.
R. Robinson, followed by Ray Vargas, followed by Jim Grivage.
Hi, it's an honor being able to address you folks tonight. I've come to talk to you about a fellow by the name of David Rogers Webb. He wrote a book last year called The Great Taking. Japanese Americans.
Excuse me, but can we get that time? Time to.
Japanese Americans won't consider this a joke, but unfortunately, we're all Japanese today. The book's 146 pages. It's online as a free audio. The book's 146 pages, it's online as a free audiobook. The, this issue is getting close to showtime. The central bank digital currency legal infrastructure is in place. Anybody in West Covina that has a checking or, or a savings account or a 401K, they're possible victims. The streets of West Covina are collateral for city debt. This is a bankruptcy insolvency collateral game, and it involves private international law. There aren't many lawyers that know anything. I mean, we have a lawyer here tonight that's probably an expert on municipal bankruptcy, but private international law is a, is a subject that not know, not many attorneys know too much about. Well, what I wanna talk about is it involves collateral bankruptcy insolvency. There's an international derivatives market, which moves collateral across international borders in billions of dollars every day. David Webb is a, is a former hedge fund manager, and he, for many years, moved billions of dollars across international borders. What he, what he says is a little bit disconcerting, but, you know, here we are in, Happy New Year, by the way, I think we're heading to the Year of the Dragon, 2024, and as I say, we're getting close to showtime. I'm a little worried that the West Covina Police Department might knock on my door some fine morning and say, well, Mr. Robinson, we're here to claim your home. And I say to the officers, well, I own my home. And the officer says, well, Mr. Robinson, probably you haven't read The Great Taking and you're unaware. I mean, if you, if you consult the internet, it says by 2030, we will own nothing and be happy. Well, perhaps we already own nothing and we're just unaware. So that's why I decided to stand up tonight. So, so what is this book about? I found, I found this on the internet. The book is about the taking of collateral, all of it, the endgame of the current globally synchronous debt accumulation cycle. The scheme is being executed by a long-planned intelligent design, the audacity and scope of which is difficult for the mind to encompass. Included are all financial assets and bank deposits, all stocks and bonds, and hence all underlying property of all public corporations, including all inventories, plant and equipment, land, mineral deposits, inventions, and intellectual property. Privately owned, personal and real property financed with any amount of debt will likewise be taken, as, as will the assets of privately owned businesses which have been financed with debt. If even partially successful, this will be the greatest conquest and subjugation in world history. Private closely held, held control of all central banks and hence all money creation has allowed a very few people to control all political parties, governments, the intelligence agencies, and their myriad front organizations, the armed forces and the police, the major corporations, and of course, the media. Now, this fellow was a hedge fund manager, and maybe he and I are both crazy, but you, the people of West Covina have to, have to know that. Well, what I'm.
Phil, Phil, thank you.
I'm not done yet.
Ray Vargas, followed by Jim Grivage, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Just wanted to acknowledge Contos, thank you for the one-on-one meeting we had. We talked about different issues and concerns here in the city of West Covina. The first concern I got is West Covina corrupted enforcement. They're singling me out. I had you pass by, take some pictures. There's nothing posted there. I'm not blocking the intersection. They put citations for blocking citation and no current tags. I sent Contos and you just a few minutes ago, my registration is due February 24th, 2024, you know? So they're doing all this bogus stuff. On New Year's Eve, at 7:05 in the morning, code enforcement is parked on Vincent, south of my house, and they're right there for about maybe 10 minutes, they're writing up a citation, they roll up on my RV, and they put another citation on there. That's when I talked to you. You know, it's a constant thing going on with code enforcement. And like I told you, me and that SOP, Mylan, we just don't get along, we, we bump heads. You guys have encouraged them to harass the residents here in West Covina. So I'm taking this personal against you guys, you know, because I'm sick and I'm tired. I caught the guy putting the citation, Rodriguez. So as I pull up behind the corrupted enforcement's vehicle, they try to take off, so I followed him. We're going down increment, they're hauling ass, so I'm right behind them, I try and get on the opposite side to tell them, hey, what's the violation for? They take the stoplight, I mean, the, they take the stop sign, they hang a right, but they had to stop on Roland and Vincent because the signal light was red right there and there was ready traffic. This is about 7:15 in the morning on December 31st. So I'm telling them, I pull up to the right of them on Roland, I'm like, hey, what are you guys doing? Why are you guys harassing and whatnot? They wouldn't roll their windows down, there was two guys in there, but the one that put the citation was Rodriguez. They wouldn't roll their windows down. I got off my car, I knocked on their window, then they started playing with their little radio and whatnot, and I told them, you know what, get that radio, stick it where the sun don't shine. Roll the window down and tell me what the violation is for. They wouldn't roll their window down, they wouldn't talk to me. The light turned green, they hauled ass, they ran away. I let them go. But I'm telling you, Brian, I'm tired of this, you know? I talked to Contos already, you know, this is an ongoing thing. My RV's brand new, she says, she just said right now, there's RVs parked out there, no motors, no wheels, they're all jacked up, no windows and this and that. My RV's brand new. There's nothing posted where I park my RV. There's no signs posted. I'm not violating any laws there, you know? You guys got so many code enforcements, you call the station and you get code enforcement showing up. I chased them away. I don't wanna talk to idiots or kids from the corrupted enforcement, I wanna speak to the PD. But there's more code enforcement employees than there are police officers, it looks like, out there. We don't need that. You guys are going backwards. Another thing, the telephone pole, still there. What are you guys waiting for? You guys are waiting for something tragic to happen? That pole's gonna come down. One more hit, that pole's gonna come down. At least three times out of the week, there's accidents there. We still haven't got the turn signals. And this is going on for several years already, you know? There, you know, we, we got families here that have lost loved ones, and it continues to happen. Nobody cares. Everybody's talking about the Christmas events, the parades and this and that, and showing this and that. Show the tragic, show, show the people that have lost their lives on Puente and Vincent, you know? Show the families that are hurting, you know? Like I told you, I had a good holiday. I spent it with all my kids and my, my family at home. Some people didn't have a good holiday, they lost some loved ones.
Jim Grivage, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Jim Grivage, tonight I wish to speak about what's referred to as a side letter on your agenda tonight with the West Covina Firefighters Association. The first thing I'd like to ask is that you pull it from the consent calendar. I believe this item is worthy of discussion. The primary reason I'm advocating this is there is no actual financial analysis. As you recall, the city has filed with the state auditor's office, the state comptroller's office, a financial plan that says you're going to perform fiscal analysis on all significant cost items. This item does not have any analysis. It has a cost estimate, which, to be honest with you, I tried to figure out where it came from, and any number I come up with is a much higher number on how much this is gonna cost, so I don't know what, what kind of analysis was done. And let me be specific about what I mean. You should be, the council should be informed of the following. What is the mean or average cost of a firefighter's overtime per hour? How much do they actually make in overtime per hour? Is it $100 an hour, 150? I don't know. How many hours of overtime were actually worked? And I'm talking about, you can use last year as your reference point. How many, and then the, the staff discussion talks about, there's certain number of hours, overtime hours that are built in. What does built in mean? Does that mean they automatically get paid so many hours of overtime every, every week or every month? I, I have no idea what the words mean. How much is that? What is it? And, and then there's this weird language in the staff analysis that says it's gonna cost more money to do overtime a new way. Why? Why are they doing it a different way? Why is it costing more money? And then it says it's gonna cost 46 hours per, per pay period. Is that per pay period, per person, per the department? What is it? Per person, it's an enormous number, it's over a million dollars, if it's per pay period. And, and there's no definition of what that means or how it was done, what it was came up with. I, I, I think as a council, if I were sitting in your place, I would wanna know what, what's actually going on here. I'd like to see some numbers. It is a cost item. And as I said, I'm not able to compute, doing all, all the ways I could think of it, I couldn't come up with anything that came close to the cost estimate that's in your document. All my numbers were much higher in terms of how much this is gonna cost. I simply recommend to the council that you not adopt this particular recommendation until you have some specific financial analysis of what it is, and how it was computed, and how much is it actually really going to cost. Because if you're gonna, if it's gonna, for one thing, if it's gonna be what's called built-in overtime, why isn't it all overtime? And all overtime would be a much higher number than built-in overtime. For a minimum, you should, no answers to those questions. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Nice to see everybody. I'd like to speak on the 1923 fire truck. For the last 20 years or so, it's been housed at Hearst Ranch, and we can all agree that Hearst Ranch is the historical site of this city. So when it was given to us by the fire department to take care of, it was broken down, we fixed it, and Andy McIntyre put a lot of money into it. We got it to run, and then it broke down again. And driving it's hard, it's like driving an Abrams, one tank, you know? You gotta shift here and push here, and when you took it for the parade, you guys fixed it and you spent a lot of money. Cost a lot of money, they don't make these parts, they have to be forged. Now that you, it's, you got it, you have it stored at the fire department, but needs to come back to Hearst Ranch, and the reason why is every Wednesday, we have a, one of the school districts in Southern California, we, they come for a field trip, and the fire truck is, is one of our biggest attractions. I think it would do better for the city if it was there, or it was there part-time or sometime than sitting at the, at the city yard. So I'd like for you guys to think about it. Also, talking about the streetlights, I've lived here so long, I remember when Azusa didn't go through, and Grand didn't go through, and Badilla didn't go through between Orange and Sunset, and a lot of, a lot of these streets, a lot of the corners, there were just stop signs, not stoplights. But we've gotten so big and so crowded that, gee, just about every stoplight, you're gonna need a left-hand turn signal. Now, 20, this gentleman spoke, 20 and, and Vincent is, is down the street from my mom's house, that's a bad intersection. Some, please, something needs to be done. Also, Glondora and Merced also needs, it's, it's just so much traffic. And then there's two streets, no matter what, can never have a, have a signal there, and that would be Orange and 20, and Citrus and Cameron, and the reason why is because they're natural runoff. So the street sits higher, one part of the street sits higher, it's graded higher, so it's a natural flow for the runoffs during the rains. So if you put a, a signal there and somebody runs it at 40, 50 miles an hour, they're gonna hit it and they're gonna wind up in somebody's front yard. So it's just something, that's my opinion. It's nice to see everybody. Happy New Year's, thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Bill Elliott.
Good evening, City Council. I wanna start out tonight with a couple of restaurant recommendations. I don't know if you've ever been to this little hole in the wall down on Merced and Vincent, it's called, has a very creative name, it's called Senor Burrito. And I passed it 10,000 times and never even considered going into it, because it just didn't look like a good place to eat. And one day I gave it a chance, and man, they make the best carnitas, wet burrito with green sauce that you've ever had. And I suggest you go by and support that local West Covina business. Another favorite is just outside the city in La Puente on Valley Boulevard, it's called Mariscos Martin. They have the best filete, cerdo, you've ever had in your life, it's like heaven, it's like Mexican seafood heaven. I've been going there for years. My wife and I and Councilwoman Viado and her husband Gary dined there recently, and it's just such a great place. It's not long on ambiance, but it's, the food is great. I wanna talk about concealed carry tonight. The corrupt California governor decided to make a bunch of, sign a bunch of laws that restrict concealed carry by law-abiding citizens who have gone through the process of concealed carry, by making it virtually illegal to carry a gun anywhere in the state. It virtually makes your concealed carry permit worthless. Justice Thomas predicted this, and all these other obstructions that are coming to prevent law-abiding citizens from protecting themselves. I got a phone call today from a real estate agent here in town that is, had her best year ever last year, and she was ranked number seven in the state. And she was very happy to report to me that her and her husband, a retired fireman, both just were issued their concealed carry permits by the West Covina Police Department. And, you know, these people are not criminals, they're retired firemen, they're real estate agents, they're registered nurses, they're business owners and single mothers. Why would anyone wanna restrict your neighbor from legally carrying a firearm and exercising their constitutional rights? Because you don't like guns? I don't like some of the things people say when they get up at this podium, but it's their first amendment right. their first amendment right. West Covina charges $1,000 for a concealed carry permit. I remember when people stood at this podium and said, "No one should be allowed to have guns but the police." A woman got up here and held a squirt gun in a plastic bag and said, "This is the only gun Bill Elliott should ever be allowed to have." Jim Grivich said, "If you carry a hammer around, you're always looking for a nail to strike." Which is one of the most absurd things I've ever heard at this podium. Like I said, the Constitution is on our side of this argument, and West Covina concealed carry's side of this argument, and we won that battle, so in your face. I'm looking at you, Angie Jelinoff, Dana Sykes, David Faulkner, Mark Taylor, and you, Jim Grivich. And speaking of Jim Grivich, he and Jerry Patras stood up at this podium and told a bunch of lies about the city council's pay raise, saying, "It's compounded, that's illegal." And then they thought better of their misstatements, and they made a little tiny retraction on Meter Beaters Facebook page. And that's not good enough. They should stand at this podium and apologize to the city council for disparaging them, and for misleading the people of West Covina, because that wasn't true. I want to move ahead and talk about in the last minute, about Martin Luther King birthday celebration here in West Covina. It was a, it was a good event, a lot of people showed up, it was nice. But Brian Tabatabai could not resist using a racial pejorative, a racial slur against white people in his speech. He said he didn't want his son's school to whitewash MLK speeches. That's an egregious misconduct by him. And this council should remove him from the mayor's seat. You should strip him of the title of mayor. Just like you threw Mike Spence out for egregious misconduct, Brian Tabatabai should have his ass thrown out of here.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
All right. Acting City Manager, may you please respond to public comment concerns? Thank you.
Yes, I will, thank you. Just a couple things. Public records are, you know, law, and we take those very seriously, and so when we receive any public record, we make sure that we review those, and we include the city attorney's office in those reviews, and making sure that we respond to them as the law requires in regards to the outdoor dining. So I just want to reiterate that the city does allow outdoor dining currently, people can apply to have outdoor dining, and we are very much in support of simplifying the process, because as a matter of fact, this evening, it's on the agenda, we are, it's part of the Development Code Update Staff Report that's being presented tonight, so we'll, you know, we can go into that during the presentation for the report. Our code enforcement officers respond not only to complaints received by residents that they receive through the GoApp request, or through email, through calls, they're also responsive to violations that they see as they drive our community. They do very much work collaboratively with our police department, and so both the police and our code enforcement officers are doing, are issuing parking violations throughout the community, so it's not one or the other, we didn't take away from our police department to bring in code enforcement officers, they both work collaboratively to respond to abandoned vehicles, and issues like that that have been called to our attention by residents, or that they see when they drive the community, as I mentioned. In regards to the telephone poll, that is not a city poll, as I had mentioned at a different meeting, we are continuing to work with a utility company to get that addressed, and so that is, still remains a project that we are following up with. The Puente Vincent intersection improvements are in design, and they are expected to be completed, the left turn phasing, by the end of this year. In regards to the side letter for the FFA, the built-in overtime is the amount of overtime hours included in a shift schedule, and that is the only change that's being proposed as part of this side letter. It's, which is accounted for separately of other overtime, and it's not creating a new method to compute overtime. It's actually going to help, it's going to allow for better accountability in reporting of fire overtime. Currently, on a 24-hour work period that they're due, it overlaps through different periods, and so that complicates it for the employee, because they don't, for the employee, and for staff, preparing the payroll and processing it, and so it's going to simplify it and just make it easier to be, to review and account for the different overtime through a pay period. So most of staff, city staff, is on a 14-day pay period, we're going to bring in the FFA into that pay period, period, and so it's going to be easier to track for both employee and for staff. As stated in the fiscal impact, a 14-day period is 122 hours, has 122 hours of built-in overtime. This is 46 hours more than the current 24-day pay period, which has 72 hours of built-in overtime. The average overtime rate for the additional half-time is approximately $21. There are currently 66 budgeted FFA personnel, so 42 hours times 21 is roughly nine, sorry, it's 958 multiplied by 66 firefighters, comes out to a little bit over 63,000. And this year's estimate is based on five months, which is the rest of the fiscal year since we're already in January. So it should be noted that there is expected to be an offsetting savings to the elimination of pay discrepancies, which have, like I said, mentioned occurred from the current 24-hour work period that crosses over multiple pay periods. So, and that was in regard to that. The antique fire truck, yes, since July, since we did the last repairs, the city has kept our vehicle. Part of it is that it has to be driven to keep, you know, you can't leave a car without driving it, it has to be driven every so often, and it's, the number of personnel that can drive it is limited. But we've always, we continued and are very open to sharing it and taking it to Hearst Ranch for any events or programs that they have, so they just need to notify us, and we would be more than happy to accommodate those requests. And I think that sums up my responses.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think, okay, since, okay, the antique fire trucks right now in our city, I think maybe you should have an agreement with Hearst Ranch, so let them know, okay, when he will be there, when they have a display for the kid to be there. I think what Glenn Kennedy says is correct, okay, you need to have children and this kind of, kind of tradition, the museum, and then really need to show in all those antique, and with the old house, and this and that. So I suppose Glenn regarding, but so to see, and that's, like you say, we need to drive the trucks, so make it work all the time, it cannot be parked there, so maybe can you have a kind of a schedule with them, to, so you can bring back to them, okay? So in that way, they know when they will have the truck over there, so people can, the children can, kids, the student can have a tour, and the sea, and jumping on the old antique truck. I think this is very educational for them. So I think, right to make a schedule.
Yes, we could definitely do that.
The date, how many days would be parked over there, so in that way, they know when they will have the truck. Thank you.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree, I agree that we should allow the children to take advantage of the antique fire truck that we have there, and it kind of, I think it'd be wonderful for them to have there. My only question is, you're mentioning that it has to be driven, it just can't be turned on?
I can double-check, but I think it does have to, we have to run it, the engine, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I just wondered if maybe it could just be turned on, and, because we have a vehicle in our garage, and so every so often, we've got to turn it on so the battery doesn't go down. Yeah, yeah, I understand. Anyways, I think it's an excellent idea, I think we should do something like that for the kids, and I agree with Councilwoman Wu. And Glenn Kennedy.
Councilman Kontos, do you have any?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I will also agree, my son actually had a program there today with his class, and I know the kids definitely do love to see that old fire truck, and just experience what West Covina was, and so every opportunity we have, that would be great. All right, we will move on then. Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items number one through five?
I'll move the motion. I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wu, to approve consent calendar items one through five. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number six, public hearing regarding development code update. This matter set for public hearing consists of ordinance numbers 2519 and 2520, code amendment number 23-01, zone change number 23-02, general plan amendment number 23-02, and associated negative declaration of environmental impact pertaining to the development code update, increase in park fees, amendment to the downtown plan and code, and amendments to Chapter 7, 15, 17, 19, 20, 24, and 26 of the municipal code. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
At this time, I will open the public hearing on the project. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor of the project, then those opposed. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Ms. Joanne Burns, our planning manager, will, but before she does, I just wanted to share, this has been a huge undertaking for our community development department, or planning division specifically. We've been working on it, I think, a year and a half to two years, it's something that we had a subcommittee for. We have not updated to this extent our development code since the 80s, and so it's a great opportunity for the city to look at facilitating development, encouraging development in our community, just by making it simpler and easier to apply for a permit. And so, just wanted to, you know, share that with you guys, we're very excited to be at this point, to be presenting it to you, it's been a lot of work, staff work, a lot of work with the subcommittee members, and the community, and the different departments that have helped provide input into this document. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joanne.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, and also members of the public. I'll go ahead and briefly go over the timeline to go over what the city has done in regards to the development code update. The project was first kicked off in May 2021. As part of the kickoff, we created a specific website devoted to the development code update. And we, that's where we advertised a lot of our meetings, loaded documents pertaining to the code update, and also, we had a survey to get input from the community. In addition to that, we also had different outreach meetings, we had five throughout the city. We held subcommittee meetings as well, the subcommittees were comprised of two planning commissioners, and two city council members, so that we can present the items that we've received, that we've received from the community to the subcommittee, so that they're aware, and they were the ones who got information firsthand, prior to making the development update public. We've also had two planning commission meetings in addition to one, one town hall format, where the planning commission, or community meeting, where the planning commission reviewed the development code update, and got a brief, and we took in public comments on that, prior to scheduling two public hearings. The most recent, on November 1st of 2023, that's when the planning commission reviewed the development code update, and recommended that the city council adopt the development code update and the general plan, and also the environmental document accompanying this project. With the planning commission's recommendation, the planning commission recommended that the city council approve and adopt the development code update, with the change that the radius, notification radius for public utilities be increased. With that, we are going to be presenting the development code update in consent to the city council. I'd like to introduce John Moreland with Ring Con, he's the city's consultant who assisted with this code update.
Thank you, Joanne. My name's John Moreland, with Ring Con Consultants, as Joanne mentioned. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, members of the public. The development code establishes the rules, regulations, and procedures to develop property throughout the city. The last comprehensive update to the zoning code occurred over 40 years ago. Since then, there have been updates to comply with state law, and other incremental amendments that have led to some complicated rules, and some somewhat unorganized zoning code. This update will combine the city's current Chapter 6 zoning code, and Chapter 20, which is the subdivision, the subdivision regulations, into one streamlined development code for the city. Most of the development code will remain, most of the existing zoning code will remain intact and not change. For example, the downtown plan will not be altered, with the exception of some consistency updates. The planned development and specific plan areas within the city will also remain intact. Regulations for accessory dwelling units and urban lot dwellings, or SB 9, are not changing, except for minor consistency updates. The proposed code update before you tonight will be organized into eight articles. I will be highlighting the major changes that will be incorporated from, into the development code from the current zoning code. Article 2 includes allowable uses and development standards such as setbacks, lot coverage, height, for all zones. For residential zones, this article was updated to include the removal of area districts for single-family residential zones. The minimum lot width, minimum lot depth, and minimum lot area criteria that were formerly in the area districts have been combined directly into the zones. This was just organizational in nature, and there was no changes to the development standards for these zones. The development code also removes the requirement and process for large homes, as well as large additions. Permit requirements and allowable residential uses were also revised to streamline processes, and to be consistent with state housing laws, including removing the conditional use permit requirement for mobile homes to permit them by right, but still, which would still require a precise plan review. Expanding the definition of group home to allow those with six or fewer occupants in single-family, multifamily zones, which is consistent with state law, as well as requiring conditional use permits for larger facilities in higher-intensity multifamily zones. And then also adding farm worker and employee housing pursuant to state law. Article 2 also contains uses and regulations for non-residential uses. The code renamed the existing office professional, neighborhood commercial, regional commercial, and service commercial zones to convert these zones into mixed-use zones. This will in effect remove the mixed-use housing overlay that was approved by city council in November 2022, essentially incorporating the overlay into, directly into the zones. However, there are no revisions to the development standards that was approved by city council in November 2022. The code also removes some lesser use zones. The code also removes some lesser use zones, like the medium commercial or the C-two zones, the heavy commercial, C-three zone, the planned industrial IP zone, to help streamline the overall code. The zone change for the specific properties will be taken to the planning commission and the city council at a later time. The code also allows for new uses and adds new uses into the land use table, including craft manufacturing, craft breweries, as well as ABC regulations for those uses. Article three contains development standards that are applicable throughout the entire city, and one such item is parking requirements, which includes regulations such as required parkings per land use and parking facility design requirements. Parking space dimensions are now included in the, in the section of the code with corresponding graphics and a table to make it easier to, easier to read and interpret. Restaurant parking was simplified to only require one parking space for every one hundred square feet of gross floor area, and also to encourage outdoor dining and to help activate the street. Outdoor dining areas are not required to provide parking for the first five hundred square feet of outdoor dining area per business. Medical office parking was decreased to one space for every two hundred fifty square feet, where it was formerly one parking space required for every hundred fifty square feet of gross floor area. Multifamily parking requirements were also made uniform between condos and apartments by, and increasing the guest parking requirements to one space for every four units. Article four includes specific land use requirements that regulate specific uses such as service stations, game arcades, and dance facilities. The code includes new regulations for new type of uses such as craft manufacturing and breweries that I mentioned. There will be outdoor dining requirements, which were added to include landscaping, setback, locational requirements, fire code, and building requirements. Regulations for EV charging and solar carport facilities were added to include design and location requirements. Hotel motel conversion regulations were also added to include parking, landscape, and maintenance requirements. Density bonus requirements, which are, which is a state, state law program, or additional market rate units are provided for projects that provide affordable units. That was updated, that section was updated to reflect state laws, as well as to define concession and waivers. The development code also, this portion of the development code also reflects recent city council approvals for service station alcohol sales, as well as shopping cart regulations. Article six includes the application process and procedures for zoning and subdivision applications. The development code has reduced the applications in an effort to streamline the procedures. Predominantly, the development code simplifies the number of administrative processes. The code has increased the public notification requirements for hearings and other required notification from a current three-hundred-foot radius to a five-hundred-foot radius for all applications, with the exception of utility facilities, which would require a one-thousand-foot radius. The code also replaces most newspaper posting requirements with a requirement for onsite posting, and the onsite posting requirements are included, and standards are included in the code. Article eight, the subdivision code includes the procedures and requirements to subdivide or consolidate a property. The development code includes an update to increase the park dedication requirements for subdivision from the current three acres per one thousand residents to three-point-two acres per one thousand residents. This increase will bring the requirement more in line with the city's current four-point-one acre parkland to one thousand resident ratio that currently exists. The development code also reduces the reviewing authority for parcel maps, which are subdivisions of four parcels or less from the planning commission to the community development director. And the code also includes flaglot requirements, such as a limitation on the number of residential flaglots, and also incorporates flaglot design standards. And lastly, in accordance with SEQA guidelines, an initial study and negative declaration was prepared for the development code update. The project was analyzed for each of the environmental issues that were provided on the SEQA environmental checklist. The initial study negative declaration draft was subject to a twenty-day public review period, which began August twenty-eighth and ended September seventeenth. The initial study negative declaration was sent to all fifty-two people on the project interest list, as well as to the required agencies. Three comments were received, two were for individuals, and one was from LA County Metro. Responses were provided to all the commenters on September twenty-ninth, as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. None of the comments raised environmental issues that required recirculation of the ISND or required additional environmental analysis. The general plan amendment before you tonight includes a SEQA exemption pursuant to SEQA guidelines one-five-zero-six-one B-three, as updates to the general plan are consistency updates necessary to implement the development code. And with that, I will turn it back to Joanne for the recommendation.
The planning commission is recommending that the city council conduct the public hearing and then adopt the resolutions for the initial study negative declaration, and the resolution for the general plan amendment and ordinance twenty-five-nineteen for the development code update. With that, staff is available to answer any questions that the city council may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right. So seeing no questions at this time. Councilman Contos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few questions, and it's buried probably in the details. So I was wondering first, John, do we have, have we maintained the current requirement, or at least what I remember to be a requirement, of only having fifty-one units per acre for approval of any multifamily housing units? That's my first question.
The multi, the density, the density requirements were not adjusted for any of the multifamily, for the multifamily zones as part of this development code update.
Okay. And my, my second question, John, is with regard to the, the park density, since we already have four-point-two acres per one thousand residents, why did we only amend the code to say three-point-two instead of four-point-two, so that way we can keep that in line to protect our park density? I mean, to protect our, the density of our, of our city?
If I may, this is Joanne. I'd like to answer the question. We did, we did research on what other cities are requiring, and the three-point-two is, is in line with, with the surrounding cities. Increasing it too high will, will discourage developers from building in the city, so we want to make it competitive at the same time, and also make sure that the city gets the park funds that we need or require.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. And then my, my last question surrounds our RENA numbers and our efforts to, to have access to affordable housing. Is that impacted by, to what, in what ways is that impacted by, by these proposed changes to our development code?
Currently, the, the housing element that, the version that was submitted to HCD last month, it, it included sufficient housing to just, to provide for the city's RENA numbers.
Okay.
In terms of housing, this development code update just incorporates the mixed-use standards that, that are included in the overlay zone into the actual, into the actual code, into the, the base zoning. And, and it incorporates state-required housing laws. So it, it doesn't, and in that, it helps the city justify the locations that we've identified in our housing inventory in the city's housing element update.
And my last question is with regard to the, the way that this has been written, are there possibilities for mixed use that would have commercial facilities on the first floor and possible housing units above the first floor for commercial use? So there would be sort of mixed use where there, there could be the creation of different communities, where there are levels that are above the first floor that would be apartments or condos, and the first floor would be commercial, and where there would be possibilities for having, for accounting for parking and other such amenities?
Yes, this is John Moreland. That is correct. The development code update allows for kind of a variety, to allow for flexibility of different development scenarios, to allow for the vertical mixed use, where you have the residential above commercial, but also where there may be just integrated mixed, mixed use, where the buildings may be, where the buildings may be separated, but they may be integrated through, through landscape or things like that. So the development code allows for that flexibility and provides standards such as open space and things of that nature for, for both.
If I may, I'd also like to clarify that mixed use is not, is not, is not mandatory. It's an option for developers and property owners. So they don't have to build housing if they don't want to build housing. It's, it's just another option that they can go with.
Thank you so much, thank you, really appreciate it. No more questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Seeing no more questions, is, we'll move on to comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Corey Warshaw, Mayor.
Good evening, council members. I want to congratulate staff and our consultants on this development plan. As I mentioned, it's taken a long time, but a lot of things had not been updated, as I said, since the eighties, and a lot of changes were made, and they were put in, but because of lack of funding, they were thrown in. I am in favor of this plan. There are some things that I don't like, but some of it is what's been created by the state, and we don't really have control of that. I did read this, I think it was three-hundred-and-ninety-two pages. And so I think I've missed some things, but one of the things that I did have a question is on a developer asking for a specific plan. I thought I had read, although when I was looking at it again today, I couldn't find it. It mentioned that with council's approval, a specific plan could be put into any of the different zones, which was a problem years back in that in residential areas, they were getting things that were not residential, they were commercial. They were, sometimes they were big buildings that wanted to be put in those areas. And I wanted to find out if that is still in the code, and if so, what council thinks about that. Thank you very much.
I have no more speakers. In favor, I have one opposed.
And if we can make sure we have the clock running.
Yes, thank you. Bill Robinson.
I won't take up five minutes, so. Well, this isn't, this isn't my favorite subject. During the discussion, four-point-two was mentioned, and the justification was all the other cities are doing three-point-two, so we got to do what all the other cities are doing. I wouldn't, I'm not in favor of having West Covina become a haven for developers. I am ignorant compared to Mr. Warshaw, but if West Covina has an advantage, I would maintain that we should keep, keep our advantage. I don't want to live in a beehive, and I don't want us to become a haven for developers. The consultant mentioned the word streamlined way too many times. I, I'm not a big fan of local government or federal government or international government, so using the word streamlined, I mean, the central bank digital slave state is supposed to be a streamlined way of making us all slaves, and just because everybody else is doing it doesn't mean we should do it. So I, I think you ought to do a environmental impact report and figure this out a little bit more. I, I, when I, when I go and vote, I, when there's an initiative or a proposition, if I'm fifty-fifty or I'm not sure, I just vote no as a precaution. And on this, I would recommend you folks vote no. If you, if you're not certain, vote no. That's, that's what I always do, so. So I'll yield back my last two minutes and forty-five seconds, and, but do a, do an environmental impact report and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
All right, I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for city council any questions. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
I think the first thing I want maybe the consultant or our planning manager to answer, okay, Corey Warshaw question?
To, to respond to the question regarding the specific plan, this, the specific plan is still within the development code update. This is mainly because the specific plan is a tool that is allowed by state law in the California Government Code, so it, it remains in the development code update. The, the specific, a specific plan, however, is required to be reviewed by both the planning commission and the city council through a public hearing process, and it's, it's the same as, changing the zoning to a specific plan requires a zone change, so.
So it's not going to happen, the concern he has, we have, let, okay, the better come in, go to residential, and change into some kind of development that residents don't like?
It, it still would require a public hearing, and it's subject to review for application.
Got it, okay. So I'm going to ask some questions. Okay, I, okay, I was the subcommittee with this almost two years, nice to see you again, John. And I think we have a numerous meeting, and that time, myself, okay, and I think Dario Casano, and he was in the planning, like our Corey Warshaw was in the planning for a long time, and then we have the current planning commissioner, Frank Gutierrez, okay, I think three of us was in that committee and with you to go through entire, it's very, okay, and detailed and painful to see all this, okay, and heavy task since nineteen-eighty to now, and we are basically outdated, okay, and thank you so much to help us. And I know state wants us to update due to they don't want the local control, they want everything go by the state, want to build more housing, okay, and see we have no choice to go with what, and basically to clarify each of, about the division and about the setback, this and that, and SB ten, SB nine, ADU by right, and, and how to separate the law. So I have a couple of questions, really quick, okay, and so on the residential, this is the concern I think most residents has, including myself, okay? Right now, you're changing to, it's RA, are we still have residential agriculture, so many is a host property? Do we still have that?
Yes, we still have the RA.
So we still have RA, so many, some of our areas still have RA, so many still big law with potentially host property?
Yes, the RA, none of the RA zones are being rezoned. They're staying exactly, exactly as they are today.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
The RA zones are not, are not being rezoned.
Okay, got it.
From today. The RA zones are not being rezoned from today.
Okay, thank you. And R1, and how about R2, R3? Before you have a single family house, single unit, single family house, two unit, single family house, three unit, or so residential, single family house, 1, 2, 3 unit. Do we still have that?
So yes, those are still in there. All that we did is really just did a little bit of administration. So previously, the city had about eight different area districts, which made the development standards confusing. So what we did is instead of that, just changed, we just added a hyphen to the end of R1 zone for the minimum lot size.
Okay.
Just to add about the multifamily zones, those are staying, those are also not changing.
So SB 9 regarding the split lot for R1 by right, so there will be in the future, there will be still R1 or there will be?
It's still an R1 zone. So the exist, what's in the code now, we just carried that over for SB 9 and essentially just copied it and put it in this development code.
Got it. So and that is by right, any of residents can split their lot into the two? They must be owner occupied?
With the, with the, there is recent state legislation that is allowing non-owner occupied.
So the new code right now, the investor coming by the lot, split two and they sell it?
That was, that's a new, that's a new regulation. It's not in this development code. That was updated by the state this year.
So it will be effective this year?
Yes.
Okay, so basically any investor can buy a house to split it? No longer need owner occupied. I'm just repeating myself, okay? Just want to, I'm just shocked, okay? So I know, okay, so anyway, and so that it will be potentially happen. And how about, my understanding would be no parking requirement?
That's correct. If, for the SB 9 lots, if they are, if they, if the city issues parking permits, no parking permits will be issued to them. That is in the code. And also the minimum driveway width or the maximum driveway width is 12 feet. And state law doesn't require the city to provide or to allow the city to provide additional parking space for the SB 9 lots.
As I remember, the old code, we have lot coverage 40%. Okay, setback, do we still have that after?
We still have that and we, in addition to that, like our old, like what we had in our current code, we limited to 800 square feet. So if, if somebody wants to subdivide a lot through SB 9 process, the maximum size unit that they can build is 800 square feet. So right now, we have not received any applications for SB 9 subdivision.
Yeah, because 800 square feet is kind of small when they're splitting two. So in that way, still have a lot coverage requirement. So we still have some requirement to the investor if they want to split the lot. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And okay, the question, another one I have about mixed use. I think this is how the state wants us to change on the commercial property. Like for example, some of the potential kind of less performing shopping mall can convert into residential. I think we went through that a subcommittee.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's what state requires to allow the investor come in to convert those property into the mixed use property?
Yes, that is, that is correct. In the, in the development code that's not part of the downtown, the maximum density is going to be 20 units per acre.
So my question and example would be the north of the 10 freeway, Azusa Avenue. And then you see we have quite a few shopping mall over there. It's kind of obsolete. So meaning we can, with this new guideline, we allow them to build mixed use, become like a Hambrad Main Street or Atlantic, Atlantic Boulevard by Montreal. You see some of the, okay, they done this like 10 years ago.
Correct.
And now become, become pretty popular. So possible, I think the state wants us to try to help, okay, some of the non-performing or rundown shopping mall. And we have quite a few on the Azusa North. Again, back in 1989, when I'm moving with Covina, and also Azusa was our downtown. I was shopping over there all the time. They have a steakhouse. They have a Tony Roma's. Okay, Oli, I think you remember, I know you like state food. I have a lot of food over there, okay? And now you see it, it's all gone and it's sad. So we really need to help that area, how to make it vibrant again. Okay, Azusa is a very important street. So I think possible this, I think we put on 15%, 15, 15%, okay, a commercial requirement. So meaning mixed use, the first floor, like Councilman Oli mentioned about mixed use on the top would be residential. Down below would be a beautiful restaurant or shopping. And then if people want to see, go to see a Hambrad Main Street, okay? And then they really turn that place around into very vibrant and restaurants. I went there a couple of times because my daughter asked me to pay for it. It's very expensive. Okay, it's still crowded. So I think possible we can using this mixed use guideline, 15% commercial requirement, allow the developer to help those shopping mall. So hopefully Azusa North of 10 freeway will alive again. Will become another trendy shopping center for us. So I think, okay, and I support this, okay, update. I think this is, okay, needed. And basically state wants us to build 4,356 unit. How many years we still left? 2007, 2027? Okay, and we need to build another 4,000. We only built 400, so we have another 4,000 to go. So we don't know where to find the, I don't know where to find the land, okay? And this Rena requirement with Covina, our quota is 4,356 unit, okay? And we try to comply with what they want and try to make it easier, look like they want us to let people to build by right. Anyway, and other than that, I just, okay, want to emphasize, to promote about the shopping mall, mixed use property and some of the shopping square, they maybe need help with this, maybe can have investors coming in to help us to make it beautiful and nice, and we need commercial to provide service. So with income, then we can hire more police and fire to protect our residents. Thank you so much. I'm done. Okay, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman?
Just a quick question. Under our, under these proposed updates, what safeguards do we have to prevent individual private landowners to split their parcels in such a way that causes an adverse impact on the neighborhood through parking? Let's say they decide to build an ADU, but then they don't, they don't make provisions for parking for those individuals, and then it just creates greater density that leads to other issues in the neighborhood. So what ability do we have as a council to offset that? Just to ensure that whenever there are opportunities that various individual private residents have to split their parcels or to create ADUs or whatever, that we have an ability to make sure that it's done in a way that doesn't have an impact on the surrounding neighborhood by causing difficulties with parking as an example?
Both the, the existing code contains provisions for accessory dwelling units as well as the, what's called the SB 9 or urban lot splits. Those provisions include design requirements, even though, and anything that goes above and kind of beyond that, if you get into kind of like a two lot split, almost kind of a two lot subdivision or four lot subdivision, that would get into a tentative parcel map or a tentative tract map, which includes procedures and would trigger the parking requirements that are incorporated in the, in the section of the development code.
Good, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I'm going to address probably the elephant in the room that nobody likes, and that is the increased setback for wireless telecommunications facilities. I'm thinking about cell towers. And we're here, it talks about single-family residential uses from 100 feet radius to 500 feet. And I'm thinking that we should increase that to like 1,500. Like I believe Walnut does the same. And plus, I would like, and I know this has been addressed in the past, about having all the mechanical devices that are needed for those to be underground.
That's within the city council's purview.
Okay, yeah, that's what I would like if the council agrees.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
And thank you so much, Mayor. Okay, so basically you asking for all the utility or, okay, they need to be, okay, away from the residential for 1,500 square feet, right?
Right.
Okay, and then, okay, I think on the code, I remember we predict together with, okay, there's 1,000 feet to notification, okay, if they get?
I think that's here already.
Yeah, 1,000 feet.
1,000 radius for public utilities.
And then you request on that if they want to do, okay, for example, we already something existent, they want to expand, then they need to go underground.
Right.
They're using a lot of our park. Okay, so in that way, they want to expand these more land, they need to go underground. I think that we went through that last time.
Right.
And I was second, I would support this. I think some other city like Walnut and some, they go 1,500 square feet away from people's home. So in that way, we don't have those dispute.
Right.
And I think a lot of resident, okay, would be.
Happy with that.
Would be happy with that. And another thing, I kind of agree with you because right now the new technology coming in is about low altitude satellite, okay? And then you can receive signal in desert, mountain and any places. So the cell tower will become not necessary, okay?
And it's ugly.
Efficient, okay, to cover all the places. So I would support. I think I would second for your amendment. You are going to amend this, right? So we can amend your coordinate, okay, your. Okay, so I will second the amendment of Councilwoman Diaz's request.
You can just put it in the motion. If that's your motion, whatever changes you want, it's first reading, and if it's clear and concise, it'll remain first reading.
Okay, so I can go ahead and move the motion with adding this to it? Yes, okay, that's what I'd like to do.
Yes, are there no more questions or discussion? Okay, let's go ahead.
Okay, I move the motion with the changes of 1,500 feet.
Through the chair, if I may, we're gonna need a resolution for the, or a motion for the resolutions first, and then we'll need a motion for the ordinance. So I believe your amendment, Councilwoman, will come with the ordinance.
Yeah. So is there a motion in order to adopt Resolution Number 2024-4? And do we take them each individually?
You can do.
Okay, and Resolution Number 2024-5?
I'll move the motion.
Second?
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz and a second by Councilman Kontos to approve Resolutions 2024-4 and 2024-5. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Resolutions pass 4-0.
All right, and can we have a motion in order to adopt the negative declaration of environmental impact, approve the general plan amendment and introduce ordinance Number 2519 for the development code update and ordinance Number 2520 for the zone change with the amendment of 1,500 square feet?
And underground.
And undergrounding for the cell towers.
I'll move the motion.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wu to approve ordinance Number 2519. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving code amendment Number 23-01. The development code update, amending Chapter 7 Buildings and Building Regulations, Chapter 15 Miscellaneous Provisions Relating to Public Health and Safety, Chapter 17 Planning, Chapter 19 Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places, and Chapter 24 Vegetation of the West Covina Municipal Code, and amending the Downtown Plan and Code. With the amendment to also include cell towers at a 1,500 feet radius and undergrounding. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Ordinance passes 5-0. 4-0, excuse me.
4-0. Thank you. Okay. Yes, let us move on. Do we have any city council reports, AB 1234 Conference and Meeting Reports? None? Okay. Any city council requests? Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, and I think last meeting, the, okay, the library, county library construction department came, and they say, we asked about, can we have a tour? Okay, and they say yes. So would you please city arrange a tour for council to, okay, survey about what, how far and, okay, this and that? See, I think she waiting for me, okay? So and another thing is they said they will be completed in April. So right now it's January, middle of January. So, okay, so hopefully, and they can keep their promise, let us to tour the place, see how far, because we can report to our constituent. And then a lot of people asking about when and how far, why is there under construction? So at least we can tell then. It's almost there, almost there, okay? And we can see. So at least we see it, okay? And we can know April will be a realistic day. So would you please city to arrange with county library for us to have a tour? Thank you.
Okay. No objection. And I also have a request. I am deeply concerned that on December 12th, the Long Beach City Council passed our, I guess, a collaboration with the City of West Covina for a lab for our health department. We had a council meeting on December 19th, and that was not reported. It actually took for the Tribune to write that story for us to be notified. And then later that day, we got an email. So again, this is a huge endeavor that the city is undertaking, and it is deeply concerning that we had such a vote occur and we did not have city staff, we did not have our health director nor our city manager notifying us, reporting to us. And so I'm requesting that we have a presentation from either TransTech or our health director on the cost. According to the City of Long Beach, the City of West Covina is gonna be offsetting the department costs. Basically, we're gonna be subsidizing their lab. And so I believe we should have an analysis. How many labs have we been sending out to LA County Health? What is the cost? What is the cost per lab? What is the estimated cost to the city? Where are these, where is the money gonna be coming from in order to pay for this endeavor? You know, we've now been in a couple of year process. We haven't had a presentation on our health department in a long time. I think after this vote that the City of Long Beach took, I believe it's time that we have, at least on this item, some clarity and a presentation on what this actually means to the City of West Covina with potential costs and analysis. So that is my request.
No objection. Okay, thank you.
I want to clarify, okay, do we get notification from Long Beach Council regarding they're going to have this agenda? Because none of us know this will be on their agenda. And the second thing, based on the information the city manager sent to us, including the article, is they just approve, meaning we still cannot use it because we still have, we still have no health department, right? Am I right? So I don't think we can discuss this. Is that we can discuss, city attorney? Because I want to know if we.
We need to bring that. So it's not uncommon for public agencies to approve a document and then first, then another public agency approves it second. We do it for, with neighboring cities for maybe for intersections of slurry or traffic signals or synchronizing. For intersections of slurry or, or traffic signals, or synchronizing them.
I understand.
Okay, so it happened, so it's going to come to you.
Understand. So you will come to us. So meaning, if you come to us, then we can discuss that time, right, about the?
Address all the mayor's questions.
There, yeah, there's, there's also nothing to, to stop a, a presentation and an updating by our, either our health director or TransTech. Yes, and so there was no objection, so I think we're good.
So basically, this is going to come back to us, since we need to approve it too, right? Since it's a contract. So it come back to us. So with that contract, then, okay, then the mayor can pull the item to discuss about what the issue is, and hopefully, you guys can explain to us more in detail. So, so in that way, this is going to be on our agenda, right? So do we still need to prepare additional, so the redundant? My question would be, this, this will be on our agenda in the future?
I, I can amend my request that, that we, we have in updating on where we are in the process and what financial analysis we've done so far on our health department.
I'm okay with that. I think we need to have that, okay. I, I agree. Okay, I think it been, we've been waiting, and we want to have a report from the state. And I know the city manager and our health officer, Dr. Bezo, been meeting with the state all the time. So if they can give us some update, okay, how's, how far, okay, and now we got a Long Beach approval, how soon we can get the money, okay, I, my understanding, they're going to give us funding. So how soon, we can expect the funding so we can set up provisional approval. So I think the update is very healthy, okay, to open discussion and, okay, transparent, to see how's, how far we got approval with state. It been two years already, it been a long time. Okay, hopefully, we can get this thing done, so we can take care of our population, bring the service into our community. So I also, I suppose we should have that, okay, to, to put agenda, to have a health officer and the city manager to give us some update.
Yeah, fantastic. It'll be great to, to finally put a, a dollar figure to what this endeavor is going to be costing the city, and hopefully, we'll have some fruitful discussion. All right, any other comments? Yes.
I just want to say Happy New Year, and we're back for a wonderful 2024. That's all.
Yeah, and just before I close, San Gabriel Valley NAACP, again, 25 years with the City of West Covina, wonderful event yesterday. And so Happy New Years to everyone. And so if we can get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned.